Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 23rd meeting of the Board. All members are present. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Also want to acknowledge and thank each member of the Board and the staff for wearing an article of gold tonight in honor of bringing awareness to Childhood Cancer Month. Also want to thank Mrs. Micali for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Okay, first up we have Transmitting of Treasury Warrants Number 2511, 2511W, 2511T, 2511S, 2512, 2512W, and 2512T. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Next up, we have the Approval of Minutes from August 19th, 2024. Is there a motion? And seconded, motion's been made in seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, our seven o'clock appointment, our only appointment tonight, is a Board discussion regarding the review of the proposed special town meeting warrant. Mr. Manager, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As was transmitted in your packet and was voted on at the last meeting of the Select Board, we have the special town meeting warrant that we previously discussed for December 7th, 2024. I do want to make note of one clerical error on the warrant that was transmitted. It was listed as being a 7:00 PM start on the 7th day of December 2024. The actual start will be at 9:00 AM, so the warrant that will be signed is going to be for 9:00 AM. We talked about the three different subject matters that were going to be in the warrant. So after review by Town Council, the MBTA zoning warrant articles are Articles 1, 2, and 3. The reason why it was separated that way was to ensure that Article number 1, which is the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, was able to be approved by a simple majority vote as opposed to a two-thirds majority vote. So Article number 1, which is the bulk of the MBTA overlay, it would be a simple majority vote. Article 2, which is a minor change to, if you look on page 8, a minor change to Site Plan Review Section, would be a two-thirds vote. And Article 3, which is an amendment to our Inclusionary Housing Section to reflect the MBTA zoning, would also be by a two-thirds majority vote. So those are the three MBTA zoning impacted matters. And then if you look on page, page 14, the last page in the packet, you'll see the Article 4 and Article 5, which are the other two articles which we previously discussed. Article 4 is the article to pay a prior year's bill. And Article 5 is regarding the eminent domain taking at 64 Wildwood Street that the Board has previously discussed.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question, if I can, status off here. So traditionally in the past, residents are used to seeing the final warrant, which will be distributed throughout the community, but they'll, under each article, there'll be a recommendation from perhaps planning or finance. Will that be the case?
Yeah, so the Joint Planning Board FinCom meeting is going to be in mid-October. Is that?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. So we can, we'll include their recommendations in the final packet that the public sees as well.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the Board?
If one.
Mr. West.
Now, what happens where Article 1 is a majority, Article 2 is a two-thirds, and Article 3 is a two-thirds? What if one passes, like, let's say Article 1 passes by 50-plus one, and one or both of the other two articles fail for lack of a two-thirds? Does the whole overlay district fail? Or how does, do we know that?
No, so these are three, three changes that need to be made in order for the zoning bylaw to flow correctly, but Article 1 is the only one that is required for us to be compliant with the MBTA zoning. What would happen if the other two articles failed would be that our Site Plan Review Section would not say, would not specifically delineate that we're not allowed to deny MBTA zoning-related applications. That would still be the law, even if our zoning, our Site Plan Review didn't say it. So that wouldn't really have a material change. It's more for clarity. Article 3 is our inclusionary zoning, which adds affordable housing requirements into the MBTA overlay district. So if Article 3, for some reason, failed, our MBTA overlay district would still exist. It would just not have the inclusionary zoning requirements for the inclusionary zoning.
So then conversely, if Article 1 fails, do we pass over Article 2 and 3?
Yes. So when we speak to the moderator, and we discussed this briefly during a meeting, setting this date, these do need to be taken in order. They need to be, Article 1 needs to go first, then Article 2 and 3. And if Article 1 fails, 2 and 3 would be passed over.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone else? Questions or comments? Okay, then what I'd like to do is just make sure that we remind folks of the date and time, the correct time, one more time, and we'll...
Yes.
Yeah, if you want to just list that off for us, please.
Yep, so this is the 7th of September, which is Saturday, December, 7th of December. Sorry about that. Saturday, 7th of December, at 9:00 AM at Wilmington High School.
Great. And so, great, thank you so much. Before we move on, I want to, normally we don't do this, take things out of order, but I see we have a very special guest in the house, and as a dad of three toddlers at home, perhaps we can take something out of order to make sure that we meet everybody's bedtime on time, all right? Okay, is, would somebody in, is there something that you, particular that you would like to...
This is number 10.
Okay. Well, if there's, if there's no, if there's no objection, perhaps we maybe take number 10 out of order, having a great, hi, thank you for being here, by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll do that next. All right. All right. If there's no objection, we'll take number 10 out of order. How's that? Okay? Number, number 10 is a Board to Consider the Request of Gabriel Shaw to Place a Menorah on the Town Common for Hanukkah. Is, is there a...
I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous.
Yeah, great idea, by the way.
Time is of the essence. If it's anything, anything like my household, well, thank you for being here, though.
Do they want to say anything?
Yeah, is there, if there's something you would like to add, if you don't mind, if you want to come to the microphone, just so they can hear you. Yeah, no, so I, I hate to do that, said, the microphone is, yeah, it's not you, it's the microphone. Thank you.
I'm just going to share a little bit about how this motion will make our town a more diverse and inclusive environment. I'm Jewish, my wife is Christian, our, for lack of a better word, adopted daughter, Amanda, they're Native American, and then the little terrorist over there. But you guys proved it, so thank you so much. This isn't my typical evening.
I, actually, I did want to say one thing, but preparing for this, I've learned every year as I get older, I know less and less. I just assumed that those of you on the other side of the table drew a hefty salary for donating your evenings, and I was surprised to find out that you're all volunteers. That caught me off guard, so regardless of your decision, I do respect and admire the dedication of time to the wheels of government.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
We'll get on to our bed and bath time to go.
All right. Good luck. You're welcome to stay. I don't want to rush you up. I'm just guessing.
It might put her to sleep.
Just guessing. Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. All right. You're welcome. Good night. All right, thank you for that. Have a good night.
And I happen to be the rabbi of the Shaw family.
Welcome.
So I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
God bless you all. And the more we can all be inclusive, the healthier it is. God bless.
I agree.
Thank you. Take care.
Take care.
All right. So we'll, here we go. We're back on track. I think, forgive me, we may need to take a vote to...
To sign the warrant.
Sign the warrant. So forgive me for that.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure, sure.
Are we making, do we need a motion to close the warrant first?
I think that's a really good question, and I, we did, yeah, we did do that.
The motion to open and close, the motion was to close it on the 23rd, so that motion is already, was already passed.
Okay, swear. Yep, no, it's a good, good point to make sure that we raise. Okay, how about to sign the warrant, to make it official?
Make a motion that we sign the warrant.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous, okay? So now we're set in stone for December 7th.
December 7th.
At 9:00 AM.
At 9:00 AM.
Okay.
Saturday morning.
And that will be distributed throughout the community and on our website. There'll be more communication coming out about...
Constable, will you be posting it? Yes, we'll give it to the clerk tomorrow.
And everybody's going to get a copy of this, right? We're going to, are we, we're going to make this available to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please.
Will Val be doing some, you know, community forums or presentations ahead of the town meeting?
Yes, so in addition to the public hearing...
Yeah.
On the MBTA zoning, I think we've already, I think the Board actually discussed having Val in to discuss, to present it again to the Board.
Yep.
She has also done with, in conjunction with WCTV, she has a clip that's, that's running on, on public access television. And we're going to talk about additional outreach that we can do in between now and the time of the, of December.
And I think in addition, that's a great, great question, the Town Manager's Office and the IT Department have been pushing out a lot of stuff on social media about it, postings as well. Okay, I believe we're on to number five now, which is Communications. Mr. Manager, we have a memo from you?
Yes, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. The memorandum is regarding an update on the Wilmington MSBA project and timelines. So I just wanted, the Board as a whole, I'm, I know from your attendance and participation in these various matters, that members of the Board are well aware of all the things that have been happening this month, but just to kind of make it official, this is an idea of some of the ongoing community outreach efforts that have been taken by the Wildwood School Building Committee regarding the upcoming October 8th vote on the preferred option for the elementary school building project. So as, as folks again are aware, there's an ongoing community survey regarding the project. There was a mailer sent out from the town to everyone, to every resident in town regarding the project. Judy O'Connell was really critical in getting that pushed out, along with a lot of help from the superintendent's office, who helped with the graphics. It was a really, a really good effort to get that going. We've had a lot of responses to that survey. At last check, it was approaching 1,000 responses, which is according to our, our, our expert consultants, a really robust turnout for this point in the process. That's ongoing, and it will go until October 1st. So if folks have not had a chance to, to investigate those options and take the survey, we'd really encourage you to do that. So on, so last week, we had a busy week. We, on the 17th, we had a school building committee meeting that included public comments at the high school. The next night, there was a community forum at the high school, which I think had a, a good turnout and, and had some really good questions from the public. And then on the 19th, we went to a very well-attended senior forum at the Senior Center. Terry over at the Senior Center had expected between 20 and 25 people. We had over 30. And, and so I think it was really a, a good sharing of information with the folks at the Senior Center, so that was good. Coming, this coming weekend, at Fall Fest, there is going to be a booth that the School Building Committee is going to be running at Fall Fest to, again, provide some more outreach to, to folks. And again, this is all leading up to the vote and preferred option on October 8th, so I did want to raise that for the Board and see if you guys had any questions or anything you wanted to kind of discuss as a result of, of the information that we, we've been rolling out.
Thank you. Anybody have a question, comment they want to make as relates to this one? I would just, again, also, I want to thank Judy and the staff who put this flyer here together. This was excellent. This went to every household in the community, and I think it really sparked a lot of conversation since the time it's gone out. You know, I think it seems to be something everybody's talking about since they got this, so this was really worthwhile. So thank you, and to our Assistant Town Manager, who is here as well. And it is, I hope people will tune in and continue to give their feedback. It is a very critical vote that will take place on October 8th. This is certainly not one that I think any of us take lightly. To be completely honest, I'm still conflicted myself, even after all these meetings and all these, all this feedback. It is certainly not an easy decision. It's one that's going to have a big impact on us for a long time, whatever way it goes. One thing I want to add is something that I said at the last Building Committee meeting, that I think it's pretty clear that everyone who's volunteered on the committee and, and others are all in favor of a new school. Everybody there, I firmly believe, is in, in favor of a new school for our community, and now there may be some differing opinions on which option, which is okay. It's a good thing that we've really kind of tried to vet all the different options and get feedback in various different ways, and it's going to be a tough vote, you know, and, you know, I'd like to say I'm looking forward to it, but I don't know if that's the right phrase. I don't know if that's the right phrase to use, but certainly it's going to be a critical one, and I would encourage people to either attend or to tune in for the vote on October 8th. It's at the high school, in the meeting room at 6:30 PM, and it will be broadcast thanks to our friends at WCTV. So, again, the flyer went out in the mail. If you hadn't had a chance to take a look at it, please do, and provide your feedback up until October 1st. And also, on our town website, under Building Projects, there's a plethora of information and documents and all the meeting recordings. If you'd like to check out any of that stuff, you can. But I really want to thank everybody who's on the committee and volunteered a lot of time to this project, so. All right. Next up, we have our Board to Consider.
Mr. Chair, Board to Consider Number 6. A Board to Consider Request from Town Clerk Elizabeth Lawrenson to Approve In-Person Early Voting Schedule for the November 5th, 2024 Presidential Election. That will include two weeks of early voting, Week 1, at least 50% of regular business hours, Week 2, regular business hours. It does include two Saturdays, and the, the schedule will be listed on the second page of that handout. It's Saturday, October 9th, from 8:30 to 2:30. Monday through Friday, October 21st to 25th, from 9:00 to 1:00. And Town Hall, again, these are all in Town Hall. Saturday, October 26th, from 8:30 to 2:30, and then Monday through Friday, October 28th to November 1st, 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, so.
Okay, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion. Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thanks to the clerk's office, this is an awful lot of work to prepare for this, and they'll be pretty busy, and they've been really busy getting ready, so.
They have been. This is a lot of work.
Yeah, so our thanks to them.
Board to Consider Number 7, Request of the Wildwood School PAC to Use the Playground and Gazebo at Rotary Park on Saturday, October 19th, 2024, at 11:00 AM.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Number 8.
Mr. Chair, Board to Consider Number 8, Board to Consider Signing the Warrant for the State Election to Be Held on November 5th, 2024.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Board to Consider Number 9, Board to Consider Request of Danielle McKeel, Danielle McKeel to Use the Town Common and Gazebo for a Wedding on November 9th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just, as we've always done in the past, we've informed them that it is a public place, and there could be other people at this place.
They don't have exclusive use.
Yeah.
That's right.
So that they know.
Yeah, we'll make sure we let them know.
Okay, please, if you don't mind, are you the bride-to-be?
Yes.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Right, please.
So, my question is, so we could have a microphone for his sister, Lynn Downs, who's actually doing the ceremony. Can we have one of the electrical boxes open?
So we'll reach out to public buildings.
Okay, perfect. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, and we're hoping really good weather for you.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we have, we had a motion and a second, and we heard discussion. Any other discussion? We'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you for coming, yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Board to Consider Number 10.
Took that up already. That was unanimous. And Number 11.
Board to Consider the Appointment of Individuals Listed Below to the Building Reuse Committee. So the individuals that were submitted by the members of the Board, plus the, the staff members would be Michelle Feeney, Dennis Kelly, Odette Kent, Jamie McGoldy, Paul Melorani, Patricia Romano, Suzanne Sullivan, and Hugh Van der Mark Jr.
And I think one person is yet to be named by the Commission on Disabilities, is that correct?
The Commission on Disabilities has not submitted their nominee yet, so it will have to be appointed later.
So that will be the ninth?
That'll be the ninth member, yes.
That'll be the ninth member. Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept with the stipulation that before their first meeting, that they have the ninth member.
Okay, we'll reach out to the Commission on Disabilities and, and try to push them. I don't think the Commission on Disabilities has another meeting until the end of October.
No.
So.
I'm on that board, so I will contact.
Okay, I will as well.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. West.
Yeah, I just, just for public knowledge, if we could have the ones that are the town employees, if we could just, if you could just say what their departments are, just so that public knows who's what, who's representing what department?
Sure. So that's Dennis Kelly, who is our Superintendent of Public Buildings, and Jamie McGoldy, who is our DPW Superintendent.
And Odette and Michelle are?
Michelle's my...
Oh, she's your pick.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I believe, is Odette the, the historical commission?
Ah, okay.
Okay, any other discussion? So we have a motion that includes the committee not come together and convene until they have a full complement of nine. They'll also need to be sworn in. There's a little bit of logistics here before they'll even have a chance to meet, but, so the motion includes them not meeting till the full nine are assembled. Now, will we need to reconvene for that ninth? Are we just going to improve, we're going to approve this ninth person, depending on what the Committee of Disabilities, I think, I'm comfortable with that. Whatever the Commission on Disabilities thinks for their appointee, I'm okay with.
Yeah.
Yeah, just don't want to have to hold them up, you know, don't have to come back to us, right?
Maybe it should, we should amend the motion to approve it, including the pending Commission on Disabilities.
Still willing to do that? Okay, still seconded, Mr. West?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Discussion, Ms. Micali.
Thank you. Once everybody's, you know, sworn in, they're ready to go, do we have, I know they'll appoint a chair at their first meeting and stuff, but do we have somebody that's going to kind of kick off the first meeting, or is that something maybe Beverly is going to, I'm just curious how, no, not to put more on your plate, Beverly, but I mean, just curious, like, when they're ready to meet, who's going to say?
I think in the, I think in the past, it was the Town Manager...
Was it? Okay, okay.
Kicked it off and would, you know, entertain a motion for a chair, and then you can, you know, kind of bow out, you know, after that, but that's, I think that's my recollection of some other prior, recent ad hoc committees...
Okay.
That we've had, so, tag, you're it. On that one.
So the volunteers know.
Yes.
Yep, and, so we, we think they don't meet till October?
October, I believe it's, I believe it's October 22nd. I'm on the agenda to attend that meeting, so I'll be there.
Okay.
But it's possible that they could try to get together earlier if, if they know they need to get something done.
Okay, great. So, all right, so just once again, the motion is to approve these individuals and the individual who will be appointed by the Commission on Disabilities, and that they will not convene until there's a full complement, and they've been sworn in. I assume that has to be the case anyways. Okay, it's been seconded. All those in favor? It is unanimous. And again, thank you to the volunteers who have stepped up here.
Mr. Chair, Board to Consider Number 12, Board to Consider a Meeting Schedule for December of 2024.
All right, here we go.
My understanding is that the, the Board typically has one meeting in December...
Correct.
Because the holidays, the question would be, what date makes the most sense for everyone to, to meet?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kyra.
May I suggest the 16th, because it's right in the middle? You have...
Okay, anybody else? Suggestions, conflicts? I know we're looking at some calendars here. Anything on the town end, Bev, that stood out? We don't have any competition, right, on that night, on either, any of these nights? I figured in my mind it was going to be the 9th, the 16th. That's kind of what I was thinking coming into this, but I'm fine with either one.
Need to check one thing.
Yeah, it's the third Monday. I don't know what else is on the 3rd.
Yeah, that does split it up evenly.
I cannot make that one.
Okay. How about the 9th?
I can't make that one. That's why I said the 16th.
Okay.
I mean, I'm still pending on the night, but right now I can't. It's a conference.
I know we traditionally meet on a Monday, Mr. Chair, but do we have to, if, if we're trying to accommodate schedules?
Yeah, I mean, we have a Tuesday meeting coming up, I think, in early October for Columbus Day. I wouldn't totally rule it out, but that's going to be, the Tuesdays become very difficult for me work-wise, full disclosure.
We could go the 2nd and get it, get it over with.
If I may, Mr. Chair, we get the town meeting on the 7th, so do we want to meet before the town meeting or after the town meeting? That's...
Good question.
Could do the 10th, although that's, I don't want to, it's going to be...
I mean, I can do the 2nd as well.
I can't. I'm sorry I'm being a problem child, but I can't do the 2nd or the 16th.
Yeah, Tuesdays are going to be really difficult for me, my work schedule, but...
Wednesday, typically, school committee.
Well, if you did the 9th, I could always call in if I'm away, right? Because I'm...
We could, we could zoom you in if, if you're comfortable. We could do it that way.
I have no problem.
So, Lil, does the 9th work for you?
Yes, I can do the 9th. The 9th, I have no problem.
Night does work?
If you don't mind zooming in, Kevin.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll be on my phone if I can figure it out.
We used to do that awful lot, it feels like, just, just a short couple years ago. All right, well, so is tentatively the 9th going to work for most folks? We know Kevin would be kind enough to try to zoom in and, we can make that happen. Okay? All right, anybody want to offer it in the form of a motion?
I'll make the motion that we meet on the 9th.
Okay.
At 7:00 PM.
I'll second for, second.
Second, okay. Is there any discussion? The only thing I would add is the 7:00 PM part could flex into 6:00 PM, depending on if we had an executive session prior, right? I think you're talking about the regular meeting, though.
Yes.
Yeah, of course, the regular meeting would be at 7. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? December 9th, it'll be here before we know it, right?
Yep.
Okay. The next item is public comments. Would anyone like to be heard? Mr. McDonald, thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Could you just tell me what the total warrants were tonight?
Sure. Do we have that?
The total amounts of the warrants were $6,104,397.25.
And, Mr. Bendel, the... And, Mr. Bendel, the warrants include more than just the town employees' salaries, correct?
Sometimes that is correct, yeah.
Not all the time?
Well, it varies. Each warrant is a little bit different.
I noticed on the warrants that there's a T after some warrant items. Does that mean town employees? Can you tell us what that T means?
I think that the letters just differentiate from the numbers. I don't have an exact, but I don't think there's any correlation to a word, right? I think the W's and the S's and the Ts are just alphabetical. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I believe that's the case, yes. They're just to differentiate the separate different warrants and the.
Okay, so the reason I bring that up is because the last meeting during public comment time, you mentioned that you take great pride in signing the warrants to pay our town employees, but in fact, that there's other expenditures that are contained in the warrants that you would have to approve. And so, I put in a public record request, and the public record request that I put in was for the amount of salary that was paid to Jeff Hull during his last partial term that he was town manager. And there were some amounts that were pretty shocking, and they were in addition to his salary. His salary was basically a little over $3,300 a week, but the eye-opening amounts that were paid out to him were a payment on September 27th for $21,571.40 as a vacation payout. On November 15th, amount of $40,706.66 for an additional vacation payout, and then there was a sick payout for $13,200. So, that's, that's roughly about $75,000 in addition to his salary. So, you would have, you would have had to sign that warrant, Mr. Bendel, which would contain that, those expenditures. So, can you explain to us a little bit about the enormous amount for vacation payout and sick time that was paid to Mr. Hull?
Well, I would just say that, like any employee who works for the town after a long period of time, like Mr. Hull did nearly 30 years, that they accrue vacation time and sick time, and we do exactly what the contract that the town has with each employee to pay out whatever's obligated at the end. In this case, I have no reason not to believe you. Those might be the numbers that were listed. I don't have them in front of me, but we make sure we pay.
These are actually the numbers that were sent to me from the town.
Well, then I would.
Through the public record request.
They do a pretty good job, so I trust they're the right ones.
So, I don't recall any line item on the town's annual budget, which is for employee expenditures, that is a line item for additional salary. So, for example, if Mr. Hull had a town meeting approval of $175,000 in salary, and he chose not to take a vacation, and there wasn't an approval at town meeting for an additional amount, how does that work?
Mr. Manager, so when someone retires, they've accrued time, how is that paid out?
So, I believe there is a line item for, you know, additional employee costs in the, in the budget for the town manager's office. And so, primarily, if someone leaves in the middle of the year, and they haven't run through their entire appropriation, the first place we would seek to pay out those costs would be from the appropriation of that individual, but oftentimes, that's not realistic, because you're going to bring in someone to fill in that position, and so it generally comes out of the line item for other employee expenditures.
So, Mr. Hull was paid a salary for 17 weeks of over $3,300 a week, and in our bylaws, it states that there shall be no additional salary paid out to the town manager position than was approved at town meeting. And several meetings ago, I brought up the fact that Mr. Semaglia, you signed a contract with Mr. Semaglia to fill a position of town manager for $154,000, and when I do the numbers, it's actually that salary that was paid to him for a temporary basis was way more than the amount that was appropriated at town meeting. And so, I believe my question to you before was that you, I asked you to check into that, and can you tell us what your findings were when you checked into that?
I think my findings are that I want, it's a great opportunity for me to thank, again, Mr. Semaglia for his great service and stepping up for the town for nearly seven months while we were in the midst of a search, and I think he did an excellent job. Grateful for his service.
Would you like to thank him to send a contamination to a private farm for the, from the water department?
Thank you for your, thank you for your come.
That's not my question about Mr. Semaglia. The question is about the budget and about the amount of money that was paid out and about what I question as a violation of the bylaw. And so, what have you, who have you talked to? What numbers have you crunched to actually respond to the people in Wilmington relative to this issue, since it was brought up many meetings ago?
Mr. McDonald, I don't have that number, although I've tried to prepare for a million different questions you might ask me tonight to spot me without a heads up. I can't give you the answer to that one, so I am going to see if anybody else would like to ask a question this evening.
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't like a million questions. This was like a question that you should have already been prepared about.
Perhaps. Would anyone else like to be heard?
Doesn't look like it, Mr. Bendel.
Okay, if that's the case, we're going to move to announcements. Anybody like to offer?
Doesn't look like you're really representing the people very well.
Thank you for your opinion. Would anyone like to have, make an announcement this evening?
Mr. Jim?
Mr. West.
Yeah, I'd just like to say we got the Fall Fest coming up this Saturday, so hopefully is, hopefully the weather will cooperate, and as many residents as possible can, can come out and check out the many volunteer booths and variety of activities that are going to be on the Town Common, town area, so kind of looking forward to seeing a lot of people down there.
Sounds good. Anybody else, announcements?
Well, I don't know whether to bring this up under announcements or new business. I was a little taken aback to see the new logo for the Fall Fest. Fall Beer and Cider Fest in Wilmington.
Yeah, I thought that was odd, too.
A little, little surprised and taken back, and it's advertised for this Saturday. Numerous beers, wines, and hards, and ciders on tap, I'm assuming hard ciders. So, the approval for the beer that we gave, did that include wine and hard cider?
It did.
It was alcohol.
It did mention those, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was a little, little surprised on the, the new advertisement.
I didn't know.
I thought it was a family Fall Fest event, but it's a, it's a Beer and Cider Fest. Usually towns have like an apple fest or peach fest or something, but we're having the Beer and Cider Fest. And I guess on a new business, another item, oh, no, we're in announcements.
Yeah, we can move to new business if there aren't any other announcements. Mr. Kyra, new business?
Yeah, new business. Regarding the 4th of July building in the parking lot, I noticed that there's been some landscaping over there in the back corner, and I'm wondering if we could get some sort of a, an understanding as to what's taking place back there? Has the fence been located on the property line between the town and the residents there? And are we now landscaping on that side to put some foliage or shield up? I, I think that there are still some big trees there, but if you could bring us up to speed on that.
Yeah, so the, the permanent fencing is not going to go into the location until the end of the project, so the permanent fencing will not be installed until, you know, next year. There is, the only fencing that's out there right now is the temporary construction fencing. They're trying to do some landscaping now, and this was always the plan. This is not a change, a deviation in the plan, and, and so, we're doing some landscaping now, and then I think the final landscaping will happen at the end of next summer, once the, the final code has gone down on the, on the parking lot.
All right, so the permanent fencing will do the property line straight down next year?
So, the, the permanent fencing will go in next year. I'm meeting with, this Thursday, with Dan Pallata, who's the OPM, and George Hooper, and Dennis Kelly, to finalize the fencing plan. We're going to be going over that.
Will it be on the property line?
I will absolutely let the, let the Board know once that determination's been made.
And who makes that determination? Is it the Board? Is it the Board of Appeals? Is it you? I, I wouldn't believe it would be the, the building, the Town Hall School Administration Building Committee, because I don't think that they have that authority, but.
Well, it's, all it is is the installation of a fence, so the, the location of that fence was determined in the plans before, I was in the seat, the, that, that fence was determined to be nine feet off the line, and I know that there's been some suggestion that it be moved back.
Who made that determination?
I, that's an excellent question. It was, it was in the, it was in the plans that came out of the, whatever, whatever process went into the, the site work process for that project.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're fair with every resident in the town of Wilmington, so that we're not giving some residents nine feet of town land and other residents not, because then you get into a kind of a sticky situation, kind of a pickle, so to speak, where if I'm a budding town-owned land and I say, well.
All right, them, not me.
They took nine feet, so why not, why not me? So, that's my.
You're absolutely right that whatever we do on that site sets a precedent, and we have to be careful about what we do.
Yep.
So, if you don't mind, sorry, if you don't mind just reporting back to the Board on the outcome of the Thursday meeting?
Will do.
Great. Any other new business? Hearing none, we'll move to important dates. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Important dates, through October 6th, we have the Farmer's Market on the Town Common on Sundays from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Upcoming, this Wednesday, September 25th, will be Wilmington's Incorporated for 294 Years. So, note your calendars for six years from Wednesday, 100th anniversary. As was mentioned earlier, September 28th, we have the Fall Fest coming up on the Town Common from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And on, as we also mentioned earlier at the meeting, on October 8th, the Wildwood School Building Committee will be having their vote at Wilmington High School regarding the preferred option for the elementary school project at 6:30 PM. October 14th, we'll have Columbus Day. All town offices will be closed on Columbus Day. October 15th, we'll have our regularly scheduled Select Board meeting here in Town Hall, Room 9, at 7:00 PM. October 21st through the 25th, we'll have a curbside collection of yard waste. October 22nd, the Finance Committee and Planning Board Public Hearing at Town Hall in the auditorium at 7:00 PM. October 25th, the Carter Lecture Fund will be having at Wilmington Middle School in the auditorium, the Working Man's Band at 7:00 PM. October 27th, we'll have the Horribles Parade at Rotary Park at 4:30 PM, which was previously approved by this Board. October 28th, we'll have the second regularly scheduled October Select Board meeting here in Town Hall, Room 9, at 7:00 PM. End of October, October 28th through November 1st, we'll have a curbside collection of yard waste, and then, as was voted on by the Select Board this evening, December 7th, we'll have the special town meeting at Wilmington High School in the auditorium at 9:00 AM. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And finally, we have our salute to service this evening, which goes to Mr. Shane A. Foley, who was a Staff Sergeant in the United States Army, enlisted in January of 2013, served honorably until October of 2021. He was, worked as a fire support specialist, entered in, out of here, out of Boston, separated in Fort Bliss, Texas. He served in Saudi Arabia, Kuwait, Afghanistan, Qatar, Kuwait again, and also in active duty in Operation Enduring Freedom. During his time, was awarded two Army Achievement Medals, an Army Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Korea Defense Service Medal, Non-Commissioned Officers Professional Development Medal, Army Service Ribbon, and Armed Forces Reserve Medal with 1M Device. Shane grew up here in Wilmington, and he continues to serve our community as one of the fine members of our Wilmington Police Department, so tonight, we thank him for his service, and we salute him. Thank you very much. And with that, I would be, did you have something you want to add?
No, I wanted to make a motion.
Do you mind if I detail it, and you'll, I'll support it? Thank you so much. It's got to be specific. Sorry to cut you off. It's going to be, Mr. DePalma, if you're so willing, it'll be a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining as relates to International Association of Firefighters Local 1370, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A, Subsection 3, and for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining as it relates to negotiations